It is eight thirty and I will call the meeting to order. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, the first order of business today is a reorganization of the board. Is there a motion and a second to approve the chairperson for two thousand sixteen?
I move to approve Ryan Krogman as chair.
Second.
Okay, motion by Miller, second by Pierce, to elect Ryan Krogman as chairperson for two thousand sixteen. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. We will approve Ryan Krogman as chairperson for two thousand sixteen. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. It's all yours, Ryan.
Well, I guess I get to go from here. Thank you, Jenna. Appreciate. All right, number three, letter B, election of a vice chairperson for two thousand sixteen.
I would move that Larry Jensen be vice chair for two thousand sixteen.
Second.
Second, okay. We got a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Congratulations, Larry. All right.
Don't miss a day.
Now I'm missing a bunch. All right, invitation for a citizen to schedule time on the commission agenda. Seeing none, we'll move forward. Number five, approval of the agenda. Is there any changes or additions to the agenda?
We have to add an executive session in accordance with SDCL one twenty-five-two, subpar one for personnel.
One twenty-five-two. Personnel, we'll put that after, between twelve and thirteen? Or adjournment? Yeah, we'll adjourn after the, there. So we'll go put it between twelve and thirteen. All right, any more changes? Okay, I approve the agenda with the change of executive session.
I thought we were gonna vote on that.
Not yet.
Actually turned it on.
All right, consent agenda, which includes the minutes, travel education requests, personnel action notices, cell allowances, human services report. Is there anything anybody would like to take off the consent agenda?
I'd like to take the approval of cellular allowances off the consent agenda.
Okay, we will, we'll put that at, right before claims here, seven. We'll go right out to routine, routine business.
Missed what you said, what you...
Cellular allowances. Yeah, D, cellular allowances. We're gonna move down to make that the first part of business and routine business.
Just for a point of clarification, do you want to take that off the consent agenda? Are you more concerned with item H?
It's item H, but the two are not interrelated?
They, they are. This is just one, this is one authorization for someone new coming on.
We can leave that one on and talk about it at the other time if, if that's what everybody would prefer. That's satisfactory.
Okay.
That would be fine.
Okay, so we'll draw that and leave the consent agenda as is. Any more changes? Okay, all in favor of approving the consent agenda as is? Signify saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries.
Do you want a motion? Oh, was there a move, motion and second?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Must be busy writing, I didn't get it.
Yeah. Okay, routine business, approval of claims. There a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion on claims.
Page eighteen of the coins, Stacy, it's, it's forty-two of the packet. What does Winn or Diesel have to do with the county bill?
They changed the fuel in the generator over at the courthouse.
Okay, okay, all right. That answers my question, thank you.
Okay, any more questions on the claims? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. All right, department head reports. Mr. Hill, would you get started, please?
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Starting out since Joyce is in the room, in the December thirtieth newspaper, it says best county public employee, Joyce Jethis. Congratulations to a fellow department head. In the emergency manager arena, we are, well, in my department, we have a zoning meeting tonight. And we've got a joint jurisdictional use being, being brought up for horses over by I-29. And that should be an interesting topic tonight. January twelfth, I will be gone for Elkton Pier. January fourteenth, we have a county fire meeting. And at this meeting is when we are going to discuss new ID tags throughout the whole county. The Office of Emergency Management is going to assign us a, a new printer called a rapid tag printer. And it's a type of printer that if there's a tornado in Elkton or a tornado even in Kingsbury County or somewhere, we can just take the, take the printer, take a laptop and go over and start logging people in and logging people out. And all the first responders in the, in the state's gonna have their own tag. It's similar to my yellow one, except it would actually have my picture, similar to a county ID tag, except it's gonna be emergency management, or not emergency management, but duty-related. Police cars will have their police numbers on them. They want vehicles marked and they also want the individuals marked, so, such as our county highway trucks, since they could be used by the state or requested by the state to go help clear snow in another county. All they'd have to do is report to that county, swipe the tag, and then we start to get, get credit for that vehicle being there. So it's, it's a streamlining of accountability in the state. It's really gonna help the resources out. And there's like eight printers statewide, so, and we're gonna have one of the printers here. And supplies and all that for the printers should come through the state. So it shouldn't be much of a cost to us, except to go to the training. January twentieth, I plan on going out to legislative day at the Capitol unless the commission would desire I not go out, since it's part of the Brookings County, we pay into the Chamber of Commerce. January twenty-fifth, we do have training on that new printer system. And I've requested through the county commission department that they send personnel along with me. So it'd be an Office of Emergency Management, emergency management-type printer, but it's gonna be a joint-use thing. And we probably need technology to learn how to operate the thing. Because you don't, I'm not exactly the most technology-smart person in the world. January twenty-sixth, we have a comprehensive plan meeting. It will be in room three hundred next door to us. That's, we'll start at six o'clock and go until no later than ten o'clock. And then we'll, if it's, if it's going on at ten still, we'll just have to reschedule another comprehensive plan meeting. January twenty-seventh, we have a pipeline safety meeting at the Swifte House Center. I would encourage any, any county commissioner that would like to attend, to attend. A lot of the, the county staff has been invited to that also, so. February tenth, we have a social media, emergency management-type class in Sioux Falls, South Dakota. I've invited our, our Brookings County Emergency Operations Center Public Information Officer and the County Information Officer to attend that along with me. And we've signed up for that. February eighteenth, we have a local emergency planning committee meeting. And that's my report. Do I have any questions?
I have a question.
Oh, yes ma'am. I'd give one alibi.
Is Sean involved in the printer? Is, is he part of the people being trained with that?
I, I've requested personnel through the County Commission Department. It's up to, it's up to that department head to allocate personnel, but I've, I've requested assistance.
And that printer will be located in our building, or?
In our building, in the county side, ready to, ready to be moved at a moment's notice, if we get caught up.
Sean is going to go. Michelle will probably go as well because she is, she is familiar with the current ID machine. She's been out of the office the last couple of days, so I need to verify with her that that works for her schedule. But Sean is planning on going for sure.
Great.
And what will happen is we'll get, we'll get like Excel data sheets from all the different fire departments, police department, and the sheriff, and, and we'll just input that. And once, once the, everything's inputted in the computer, then you just hit print. And, you know, it's just, just like a machine gun, just prints out ID, 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 ID. So it's not gonna be time-intensive once we get the, get the stuff in the computers. And last but not least, I did talk to, we got a planning commission board member fixing through the park. And she stated that her last meeting will be May. And she is willing to leave earlier if she must, to allow a smooth transition. So did that answer the last, at the last meeting, we had a question about when, when would be her last time here. She said the, the May meeting would be the last time. So I work at the commission department head and we'll get that advertised at a proper, proper timeframe. We don't, like I explained to her, we're not trying to rush her out the door. We just wanna make sure our, our procedures are met in line.
And it'll be nice that she'll be there through the comp plan adoption process because she's been so involved in that. So that'll work well.
By all means, and she'll be missed, like all of our board members when you decide to leave. Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you wanna do the be it noted for the first quarter SLA?
Oh crap, I'm sorry. Yes, by all means. I knew I forgot something. I included the state and local agreement in the, in the packet for your review. And everything was completed except for the last four bullets, which I have to add information that we've done locally. And going down the list, you could, it, it basically just applies, we, it, it reports by incidents we report to. And it talks about what trainings we're required to have. And over my many years, we've got all the training except one course. And of course, the goal is to get my deputy to have all that training also. But the, the training listed on this particular form is basically all of mine. And we're, we're working towards getting, getting his training. Anything that says IS, that's an independent study course or a correspondence course. So we'll, we'll be able to catch him up pretty fast on those particular courses. Any of the G courses, those are ones that have to be presented with an instructor, so. And he is going next, this month, matter of fact, later this month, down to Yankton to complete his ICS four hundred. And then he will have the complete ICS series completed, which to me, that's probably the most important thing on the whole list in the beginning. And then we'll catch him up to speed on the rest of it. Exercises, we haven't done any yet this year, we'll, we'll get onto that one pretty soon. We did promote winter weather preparedness day. And then the last four bullets, I have to add some information to. But other than that, are there any questions?
Nope.
Thank you.
Thank you. Vicki.
Good morning.
Morning.
We've had a busy new year so far. We started out yesterday with about ten people waiting before eight o'clock to get into the office to get their new license plates. And so the system went down a couple times, because I'm sure it was the same all over the state. But that is something to do with the state. They got it up and going and we were busy all day with people getting new license plates. And so that was, that went well. And the tax notices should go out the beginning of next week. They're all down in Sioux Falls getting printed and they should be going out the first of next week. And that all went through without any problems, so that went good. And otherwise, business as usual. Anybody have any questions?
Yeah.
I had somebody ask me about the license plates. They can get those tags at an ATM, right?
Correct.
But now this year, with new plates being put out, everybody has to come into the finance office?
They can still do it through the self-service terminal, but they will be mailed out. They will get the actual tags when they come, but they'll be mailed out the, well, they'll get a registration, a temporary registration, but then the plate will be mailed out from the state, so.
So people can still do it through the ATM?
They can.
At an additional cost?
Yes, there's a five-dollar charge for mailing out. But we charge the same five dollars if they would send it into the office, so.
And just for the viewing public, in Brookings, where can they use that ATM?
That is at Hy-Vee, right when you come in the door, there's a self-service terminal. And what you need to be able to access that is you need your driver's license number and you have to have the correct address, your correct address, because you cannot change it once you get into the system. So if they call us, they can change the address and have it correct for when they go there. So, you're welcome.
All right, thanks Vicki. Sheriff. All right. You're not off the hook, though.
As usual. Good morning.
Good morning.
Probably the best news, yesterday I met with the railroad and the state people. And on the railroad crossing at Thirty-Fourth Avenue, we've narrowed it down to where construction will take place in two thousand sixteen. Depending upon when all their materials and things come together, as far as a construction crew and scheduling, they anticipate that it'll be probably in July and no later than August. However, as they get closer, they will be getting in touch with me and then we can coordinate. What we have responsibility for is simply cutting the old, the existing pavement and placing new blacktop back in once they're done. As far as any administration work, it's all done by the state of South Dakota. Any matching funds and billing according to the crossing will come from the state of South Dakota, so. And that can be, they say in a timely manner, but that can mean a long ways down the road. But that's to keep in mind and, and I think it'll progress really well. We've also informed the guys that should this happen mid-week or towards the end of the week, that we'll plan on working whenever we have to to get that paved as soon as possible. So that, that could come into play too. But other than that, it should be a very quick process. Once they start construction, they're anticipating no longer than like forty-eight hours from start to finish. And so it would be kind of a, a welcome thing to get done and we'll move on from there, so. Other than that, I don't think I have anything else.
Questions for Dick? All right, thank you. Sheriff, did you wanna come up now? Okay, sounds good. Joyce and Chris.
Good morning.
Morning.
Well, as Bob brought it up, first of all, I have to thank Mr. Cecil for his comment in the paper because it's probably one of the nicest compliments that I have ever received. But Bob was also noted in that article as the most polite county, the most polite county employee with the worst job. So he has to be recognized also. So the two thousand sixteen intentions, which are all of our paperwork that involves our changes for the two thousand sixteen assessment notices and what we're going to increase or decrease based on our market studies have been sent into pier. They're required to be there by January one. They will be in your packet at your next meeting. And Stacy will schedule a time for us to visit about what we're going to be changing for two thousand sixteen. And we're working now on changing everything over to the new values, doing all of the paperwork that needs to be involved in the office to do that. And we're fine-tuning a few areas that we have always come across as you're doing this. So we're working with quality pre-sort to print the notices this year. That will be a change for our office. And we have sent them a test file to see how this is going to work. So hopefully that's all on track to get the notices printed and mailed out by, by mid-February. And we will be following legislative notices and changes that might affect our office. Any questions?
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Mike.
Good morning. Seems like I was just here a week ago. You were. Well, sure, I forgot to add these up real quick. It was, you know, with just being one week, it was kind of a late period in between there. And I was just kinda run real quickly down on the, the number of people we had in. I guess it was, it was probably, we had about twenty veterans come in, about twenty-one out of the welfare side. And we had probably about fifty calls coming in and about fifty coming out. And I got them written down, I just didn't total them up. I was trying, what is happening today is we got some emails coming out in regards to something we discussed last week. And, and that's kinda why I'm a little late getting up, about the Medicaid expansion and how it affects the, you know, different counties and everything. And I have not got the numbers put together yet, but we do have a bunch of the welfare directors that have been communicating this morning. And I do apologize for being late. In general, it seems like we'll probably be asking to support that. I think that would be a good thing for, for the counties as far as cutting down on the amount of expenditures we have for medical coverage. And I guess the other part of it is, in my opinion, again, is that now we will be having the lower-income members of our county will be getting medical coverage, which they have not had in the past. And, you know, personally experiencing when you have someone coming in with, with different stages of cancer and telling them that the county does not pay for that and, and basically having to tell them to go home and, and pray. About it. Anyway, that out of the way, we did attend a meeting yesterday at the Brookings, I should've wrote it down, yeah, chamber meeting yesterday for Veterans Affairs Committee. There's gonna be a couple different things of legislative-wise that'll be coming out. And then on the eleventh, I will be attending the Legion meeting in White. That's the county Legion meeting.
Okay, questions? All right, thank you. All right, we'll move on. There are no scheduled agenda items, so we'll move on to regular business. Action to approve agreement fifteen dash one hundred, a mail pre-sorting delivery agreement between Brookings County and Qualified Pre-Sort Services LLC. This is on the table currently, so I would look for a motion to remove it from the table.
I'll move to remove it from the table.
Is there a second? Second, okay. Discussion on removing from the table? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. All right, discussion.
I guess my question is, do you feel that our concerns were answered in the revision of the contract, Terry?
When I talked to him and I explained the sheriff's office position, my office's position, I feel like he was very forthright in that it's not what the contract was about. It was just boilerplate in his, they don't do a lot of contracts. So I was comfortable with it. There isn't any penalty and I just told him there's gonna be things we don't use your services for and he was fine with that, so.
Did, did we remove those?
The two items I highlighted in the old, the previous agreement, number seven here, and then number one in section three, those were the two items that were removed from the contract, from the current contract that's, that would now be in front of you.
And those, by removing those, Terry, that's, would make it comfortable for you?
Yes, I just didn't want to be mandated that we are required to use it because there are certified letters, there's evidence. And we don't want our samples going to the state health lab through there, et cetera.
Okay. All right, I guess I would look for some sort of motion.
I'll move to approve.
Do you want with the contract?
The amended contract, yes.
With the two things out, okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, okay, discussion. Hearing no discussion, Jenna, call the roll.
Wyseth?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce? Krogman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter B, discussion and possible action to seek cost estimates from architects for an addition to the detention center. Sheriff, would you like to start with that?
Good morning.
Morning.
When I was talking to Stacy about that, we kinda, we're, we're talking about how to word that. And I guess what I'm looking for is probably some direction from, from the commission also. But, you know, since the article, I already had one architect call. And it was a good article, thanks. And I guess what I'm looking at at this point, in visiting with this architect, what he wants to do is come in and, and just see what we want and, and kinda give us a proposal. So at this point, I guess I just wanna seek some, some other ones to get a proposal. At this time, there wouldn't be any cost, I would think, to these proposals. And then at some point, then I suppose we'd have to bid, then start a bid price. So that's what I'm, I'm just get, trying to get a starting point with, with the commission's approval to, to start notifying architects to give us a proposal and then, and then I'm sure we'll have to go into a bid process at some point. That makes sense.
You mean by bid process, you mean request for proposals from other architectural firms?
Well, I would think at some point, depending on what the architect wants to charge, I imagine we'd have to put it out for bids, wouldn't we? Anything over, if the architect is gonna, if it's anything over twenty-five thousand dollars for their services?
Request for proposals are not gonna cost right?
No, there would be no cost now, we're just getting.
No, but if you, you're talking of working with this architect that came forward at no cost to kinda give you a ballpark, or what?
No, he, he, he'll, he'll do a ballpark. He can do a ballpark after he comes and sees kinda what we're doing, you know, to give us a little idea, give him a little idea.
Just, you know, been a longstanding tradition in Brookings to go with a firm to have it looked at and then to see if they can afford it, if they want. And then the next thing you know, they're the firm. And I'm not opposed to that process, but I'm just gonna throw out for suggestion is that you, we make it open to architect firms right away and explain what we want accomplished and see their ideas and have their proposals made.
Isn't that what you were asking for?
Oh, that's what you want? That's what I want.
I missed the part, the one architect and then all of a sudden the other.
No, no, actually, Lake County, Lake County's looking, and, and they have three or four architects that have already given them a proposal. So I'm gonna look at those, the same ones. There's two out of Brookings and one out of Harrisburg. You know, and once we go into deciding, and, and of course, the commission will be the final decision on who they go with. But, you know, things we gotta look at is, is their previous experience too with, with jails. You know, you, you want architects that are familiar with jail standards. And, you know, South Dakota lacks really jail standards. So we have to go by the American Jail Association. And that's usually what, what they look, you know, look at when, when we look at space per square foot for inmates and those types of things. So, you know, we wanna hire an architect that's got those experiences, that worked with previous jails and so forth, so.
So you're looking at to open it up to more than just the one, you had the one contact?
From the article, I just was, I had one.
You got one, but you're looking at contacting the other ones?
Absolutely, yeah. And I didn't wanna start notifying anybody until I came to you, to the commission and see, make sure we're going in the right direction.
Okay, I'm sorry, I misunderstood your margin.
The direction you would like me to go in, so. So there's one, a local one has, has contacted me. And then I would like to contact some other ones and.
So you would like some type of action to seek cost estimates from us?
Basically, you know, at this time, there won't be any, there'll be a proposed cost estimate, I would, I would think, from these. And then at that point, then I, I think we'd have to put it out to bids of some sort. I would think, yeah.
Consensus.
Yeah, just to go ahead. I'm just looking to go ahead and I just wanna stay on the same page with you folks, so we.
All right. Think everybody's on board with that? Okay? Yep.
At this point, it shouldn't cost us any money yet, okay?
Good job, keep, keep it there as long as you can.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, C, action to approve the Brookings Register, the Volga Tribune, Tri-City Star and the Elkton Record as the legal papers for Brookings County for two thousand sixteen.
Second.
Motion to second. Discussion on that. Discussion on that. Hearing none, call the roll, Jenna.
Miller?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter D, action to approve the official depositories for the Brookings County Funds and Monies for 2016 as follows. Richland State Bank, Bankstar Financial, Citizen State Bank, First Bank and Trust of Brookings, Dakota Bank, Wells Fargo, Home Federal, and MetaBank.
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Discussion. Hearing none, please call the roll.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter E, action to approve Resolution 16-01, a resolution setting the official pay plan for FY 2016 for Brookings County.
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Discussion. Hearing none, please call the roll.
Pierce?
Aye.
Wyeth?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter G, action to approve Resolution 16-03, a resolution setting the pay for election workers in 2016.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Discussion.
We skipped F.
Yeah, you skipped, you skipped F.
Where?
F.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, we'll do G and we'll go back to F.
Be far for me to say anything.
Check this out. All right, let's finish up G.
I had a tendency to get ahead of myself too, so I...
Okay, we've got a motion to second on G. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll.
Wyeth?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, letter F, action to approve Resolution 16-2, a resolution setting median pay and per diem rates for volunteer county boards for 2016.
Move to approve.
Second.
Second. Discussion. Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Miller?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Wyeth?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, H, action to approve cell phone reimbursements for 2016.
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
A second.
Second. Discussion.
I would like, I know we have this in our budget this year, but I think some of your cell phone reimbursements are getting to be high, and I'd like us, and perhaps Stacy would be the us to whom I'm referring, to maybe do a little research in looking into how we're coming up with what we're reimbursing. I don't know when the last time the county actually did a study to look at what we were doing with that, but we're spending a lot of money in a year, if I'm, my math is right. You know, we're spending over, maybe close to $30,000 a year on cell phone reimbursements. And I just think we should take a look at that again and look at how other places are doing it and see if we're on target with that. I'm not opposed to us approving this for this period because we already have it in our budget, but before we get to budget time, I'd like us to look at what we're doing on this.
Stacy, you got that? Work on that? Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Wyeth?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter I, action to approve board assignments and department liaisons for 2016. All right. Here's where the negotiations come in.
Stacy, do you by any chance have a list?
Right there.
What's listed in front of you currently is who is in that position, then we can fill in the blanks as we go.
All right.
Okay, well, we're just going to take this down. Now, there are a couple that the chairperson needs to be on and also the vice chair, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So we should probably get those, fill those in first, and then from there, go down the list. So which one do I need to be added to?
East Central Regional Communications Council, the E-911 Board is, this is the chair and the vice chair, so this would be, why does it have to do that? Krogman? I'm just going to delete that. And this would be Jensen.
Here's my minutes, Larry. I still...
I believe the Housing and Redevelopment Commission is that. I think that's a chairperson position too. Okay?
LEPC.
LEPC is chair.
There you go. You keep these notebooks, I don't want them.
I think that's, I think that's it.
And then liaison, do I have Mr. Hill as the department liaison?
So then the emergency management would be Krogman here.
Yep.
Then I think we can go back to the top and...
All right.
Fill in.
Okay, I guess, you know, after, we'll go down there and we'll talk, the person that's on there can kind of say if they would like it or not, or if anybody else, or if they want to leave it open, they have no, and then maybe we can jack you some around, depending on how many people have, so. Larry, you have four?
I guess I could stay on there.
Okay.
It's a quarterly, quarterly meeting, so.
I'm willing to do that also unless somebody else is interested.
All right, Larry, thank you. Brookings County Regional Railroad Authority, I, you know, we haven't had a lot of meetings or anything like that, only comes up as needed basis. I can stay on it, but I don't have to either if somebody has interest in it.
Well, let's, let's leave you there, and if you get really overcrowded, we'll...
Okay.
Yeah.
And then, then we have another one, another, Larry, do you want to stay on there?
I'll stay on it, dude.
Doesn't matter. Yeah, we haven't...
We've met once.
Met once, yeah, so. BDC, I would like to stay on it if I can. I've been on it for quite a while and that kind of thing, but if somebody else... Okay, extension board?
I'll stay on it unless someone feels strongly they would like it.
All right, we'll keep you on there. Brookings Board of Health?
I've got some empty spots now, so...
Tom would take that one? Domestic Abuse Shelter?
I'd like to keep that.
Okay. East Central Behavioral Health? You know, I don't know, it's up to you guys, I can stay on it if somebody else wants to.
You have time, Ryan, with, I mean, you're going to have some added duties with being chair.
Yeah, I'm going to have, it is, you know, I guess I can stay on it if it's up, it's up to you guys if we get to the end here and I've got 12 and everybody else has six, so. Okay. Like I said, you know, I've also had discussions with that, and we had that group get together and kind of been involved with that along with some of the other ones, so it doesn't hurt for me to stay on that either, so.
I'll keep First District.
First District. Okay. Government Affairs?
I'd like to keep that.
Tom, Growth Partnership?
I'd like to stay there.
Okay. ICAP?
I'll take it if you don't. It's up to you.
No, that's fine, you can go ahead.
Or any other commissioner, but I just...
I've been on it, and I think it's good for different ones to serve. I think that would be a good one for you to go on.
I'll take that one.
Okay. We don't, we meet every quarter basically on building issues and that kind of stuff. It's a morning meeting. I can stay on it too, doesn't matter.
If you don't want that necessarily, if you want to stay on it, fine, but if you're saying you're looking for something to get off of, I would do that.
Okay, go ahead. Stephanie, you want to stay on there? Stephanie will stay? Yep. All right, Leanne Swiftel?
I'd like to stay on that.
Okay. And Planning and Zoning?
And I'd like to stay on that.
Really? All right.
Well, however you wanted to argue. Two years wasn't enough for me.
I'll stay with the weed.
Weed and Pest, okay, Stephanie will stay with Weed and Pest. Youth and Family Services Advisory Board, JDC?
And I can stay on that unless somebody else has an interest. It really, that board does nothing. I mean, this year has done nothing. We came with, they came with the contract, you know, to look at that, but other than that, we really didn't meet, didn't do anything.
Anybody have a...
I think that it's, there's going to be some action on it, and I think if you'll keep it, it's a good one for you to be on.
Yep, I'm happy to do that.
All right, Hospital Board, I certainly can stay on that.
I'm willing, I'm willing to do that.
You want to do that one?
Sure.
Okay.
I don't like pie, but... Usually I have pie.
Our 34th Avenue Project Liaisons?
Do we need that on there?
Well, I was, I crossed it off before I came, but then, until we suppose we get the rail crossing...
I really don't think you two need to be worried about that. I think anything that we need, we can do in front of a full board.
Sure, that's great.
And then same with the NOVIDA, with that project being finished now?
Yeah.
All right, South Dakota Drainage Liaison, or South Brookings, excuse me.
That's kind of dead in the water, too, isn't it?
Where do you think you're at, we're at on that, Larry? And we had those meetings and...
I mean, the core engineers, basically.
It kind of ended, yeah.
Which is nowhere, right?
Right.
So I think we just as well take that off.
I would say if they resurrects the interest of the citizens, they'll come to the commission and then we'll...
Delegate.
Delegate this.
Okay, so pull that one off. All right, we have Richard Heeb as our county coroner. Keep that the same. Deputy county coroner and as the sheriff.
That's you and all of the deputies, is that right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. All right, then that'll stay the same there. Department Liaisons. Okay, Community Health, Wick?
I was willing to flip with you in emergency management.
Sounds good.
Okay.
All right, Equalization.
I'm fine. It doesn't matter to me unless somebody else wants.
Finance Office?
I'm fine.
Okay. Highway?
Yeah, Vicki's fine, I guess.
I'll keep Highway.
Okay.
Unless Dick wants to get rid of me.
Registered Deeds?
I'd like to stay there.
Okay.
I'm looking forward to our new computer program transition.
Sheriff Detention Center, I can certainly stay there. State's Attorney? Good and okay. Veterans Human Services, Larry?
Sure.
Okay. Weed?
Yep.
All right. Zoning and Drainage, Leanne?
Yes.
All right. Now, do we need to, that was really good. Do we need to have a motion to approve this, or is this just...
Um...
Do you want to review?
I think we usually approve the list.
Have we loaded Ryan down?
Nah, we're good. We're fine. Yep, we're good. Okay, so I look for a motion to approve the list.
Move to approve.
Is there a second? All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Pierce?
Yes.
Wyeth?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, number 10, Commission Department Director Report.
Okay, my report was much shorter this time with just one week in between. We will be holding a public hearing on Tuesday, February 9th, on the comp plan. Will come before this board. I'm wondering, would you like that public hearing scheduled as part of the morning agenda, or would you rather have it as a separate, kind of standalone item in the afternoon? You know, it could get to be quite lengthy.
I think having it in the morning just throws the meeting into a whatever, you know.
So it lasts one o'clock? One o'clock, is that what everybody's kind of looking at?
Mm-hmm.
February 9th at 1:00.
One o'clock, yep.
Okay. Last, at the last week's meeting, we had the, you all received the invitation for that pipelines, the pipeline program out at Swiftel on January 27th. It looks like there's an online RSVP process for that. Were you going to do that individually, or did you want me to RSVP for you? If you need that information, I can get it to you as well, but...
What do you think? I would just do separately.
Okay.
And that way, people can take a look at their schedules and...
I won't.
And if anybody has questions on how to do that. Okay.
And then Bob had asked to share the save the date email regarding the 2016 Homeland Security Conference that's coming up May 3rd through the 5th down in Sioux Falls. That invitation was part of my report, so just so those of you interested in attending that can get that on your calendar. Just some upcoming dates listed there. Tomorrow at 1:00, the board was invited along with Dick and myself to go over to the city of Volga to discuss Samara Avenue. I don't know, I don't think I need to RSVP to Andrew, who's all going to attend, but I want to make sure that that gets on the record if there's a quorum over there, that there was a meeting over at Volga at the city offices at 1:00. I plan to go. Are you going to? Dick and I will go for sure.
Is this a public meeting that has been advertised that we can have more than two?
She's just doing that. That's what I'm doing.
All day, she's doing that, okay. I'll be late if I go. I got a meeting at noon.
You said this is tomorrow?
It's tomorrow, yes.
I can, I can go.
I think I'm going to go.
Okay.
So what you're saying is two, is that?
We can go as many as we want.
No, as many, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Maybe.
Maybe, okay. No?
I'll be late.
Okay.
1:15, 1:30.
Okay. 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 And then also to get on your calendars, March 9th, it's a Wednesday, we host the next eight county meeting. So if any of you feels real strongly about that, you can come visit with me and we can make some plans. We have to do an agenda, we have to hire a caterer, decide on a location to have this. Two years ago when we hosted, we had it here in this room, we set up tables and ate in this room, the food was served next door in the community room. I think that worked pretty well. Then there was enough space for breakout meetings and stuff to hear if we want to do that again. But we'll have to hire someone to bring food in and set the agenda, basically, so.
Did we have Hy-Vee catered?
We actually had the Valley Restaurant where Volga catered it two years ago.
It was really good, I remember that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, we'll have to.
So if any of you have any thoughts, share them with me, because it'll be, I'm gonna start working that sooner rather than later, so that doesn't sneak up on me, so. And if you have any other thoughts or any agenda items that you would like to see on that, let me know, so I can start contacting individuals to come that day, so.
Well, be kind of driven by legislative issues, I assume, so hopefully.
The session will be wrapped, just have wrapped up by then, I think, so.
Make sure they're here.
Legislators.
Yeah.
Pretty much takes the whole program. Todd or somebody from First District, I'm sure will be here. And invite.
Neither Bob or Chris would usually come.
Yep.
Okay. That's all I have, unless you have other questions from me.
Just one thing, Stacy, for example, a couple of these committees that I just took from, Ryan, do you contact all these different committees on behalf of us commissioners, say, here's your new person?
Yes.
And since I missed the housing meeting last year, because I never got notification, just to make sure, can you tell us when they meet? Rather than wait for me to hear from, because I never did hear from the housing last year.
There were some issues there, and Mike isn't, isn't here, but.
Well, I can just ask one of the commissioners that served on, like, it just, you notify me that we have a different person, and that they should be notifying us of when the meetings.
Mike could be letting him know if Mike were here, because he goes too. They, you know, they lost, they lost their secretary who used to do that, Twyla passed away, so I think that's part of, she had cancer, and I think that was part of the issue why you weren't notified, probably. But Mike knows when those housing meetings are, so he can, if, if Ryan doesn't get notified, he could certainly let Ryan know.
And I can try to contact people too, and I'll try to find out and share that information. If something's changed and if you don't know what something is, I'll try to find out for you. But all the, it was, did anybody else, other than that housing, did anybody else need me to research when their meetings are, you know?
I have, Hospital Board just had their agenda put out, so I'll give that to you.
Oh, okay.
They have all their meetings scheduled for the whole year.
And ICAP is?
ICAP is every couple months on Wednesday at 9:00 in the morning, usually in Brookings here.
But it won't be for a little bit, yeah.
Yeah. I have, actually, probably have that one in my planner already too.
Board of Health is? Whenever?
That's a city board, and I can find out for you there too.
And that, yeah, that one is, that's with the landfill, has to do with the landfill and that, that stuff there, and so he'll usually send out, you know, a couple weeks ahead of time, usually in the morning. I think we met three times.
Yeah, and I know, I know Bonnie at the city has already contacted me asking about some of these, and I said, you know, we would be making that official today, so I'll make sure I share this with her and that she gets that information out, or gets it to me, so I can share that with you too, so.
That one's a little bit flexible. All right, anything else? All right, Deputy State's Attorney, Carrie?
I have nothing to report.
All right. Commissioners Reports, Leanne, why don't we go ahead and start? You, if you could.
Since we met last week, I haven't had any meetings, just been working on reading the comp plan again, we take the draft one more time in front of planning and zoning tonight, so.
Larry?
The only thing I had after the meeting last Tuesday, I did go out to the calf show for a while. It, it was not very cold out, it was nice out, the whole arena was full of fitting shoots. Most of the people kept their animals in their trailers outside, and I guess they had a very good turnout considering the weather, weather situation, so.
I didn't have anything between.
Nothing, all right. I had the Hospital Board meeting, and they just kind of did their year-end stuff, looked at numbers through November, and then they met executive session for personnel and stuff like that, and then they arranged their board. And so I think Justin Sell will be still chairing that committee, and then they organized their committees and different stuff like that, so just more discussion stuff, so. All right, that's it for commission reports, we need the motion move into executive session.
Just one more quick thing that I can add to, the 26th of January, it's a Tuesday evening, is our VFW social. I think it was on your, your monthly newsletters that I handed out this morning, but I wanted to make note of that too, so you can put that on your calendar. It's going to be an evening thing, 5:00, 5:30 until, into the evening, so.